Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Dartmouth School Committee to Order for Monday, October 7th, 2024. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Please be seated. Well, good evening once again, everyone. We'd like to thank you and welcome you to tonight's Dartmouth School Committee meeting. I appreciate those of you who are in attendance this evening as we're very excited. I know Dr. Saban McGuire and her team are very excited to be presenting our district strategic plan. As a reminder, this meeting is being videotaped by actually our Dartmouth High School media class, and it'll be rebroadcast on Dartmouth Community Television, on Channel 9, on the following days, Wednesday and Thursday at 5:00 PM, Friday at 6:00 AM, Saturday at 8:00 AM, and Sunday at 2:00 PM. And you can always watch it on our Dartmouth High Media YouTube channel. So I'd just like to remind everyone to please silence their cell phones if you haven't done so at this time. And if I could have a roll call, please.
Chris Oliver.
Here.
Elizabeth Coughlin.
Here.
Kathleen Amaral.
Here.
Mary Beckwith.
Here.
John Nunes.
Yep. Thank you very much, everyone. I would ask for the committee's pleasure if everyone is okay with moving public comment this evening based on the presentation of the district strategic plan, that I felt it would be helpful if we moved that to the end of tonight's agenda for this one time. So we'd give our audience members, people in the audience, any opportunities to ask questions following it, considering that we are going to be discussing it. Is anyone opposed to that?
I think that's great.
All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate it all. Appreciate you all. At this time, Chair will entertain a motion to approve the regular session minutes of September 23rd, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
So we got a motion by Mr. Nunes, a second by Ms. Beckwith. All in the motion? Any further discussion? Chair hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the executive session minutes from the joint meeting with the Select Board on September 23rd.
So moved, Mr. Chairman, with the stipulation that they be held until the matter for which they were intended is complete.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Nunes, second by Mrs. Amaral. On the motion, any further discussion? Chair hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I will abstain.
Yeah, I was there.
Okay. Yep. Motion passes. Four to zero.
No, she wasn't there. That was when we met with the Select Board.
Correct.
I abstain.
I'd like to second that.
We had quorum.
Oh, thank you. Yes.
Yeah, I'm seconding it.
I was not. I was not there, so.
So I'm seconding it.
Okay. So, motion by Mr. Nunes, a second by Ms. Coughlin.
Abstention.
Motion passes three to zero with two abstentions. Thank you, everyone, for that. It's always the little things that get us hung up. Next up, pleased to recognize our student representative, Jordan Rosenberg. And we welcome you to the Dartmouth School Committee meeting. We invite you to share what's going on at Dartmouth High School.
Hi, thank you for having me. So the first thing I want to go over was, we had a successful club expo recently. It took place during the lunch period, and it was just a great way for everyone to see what kind of clubs the students are running in the school, especially for freshmen who want to get more involved. We also have the freshman elections coming up, and the Student Council will be running those. So recently, we've had Student Council members go to advisories of freshmen and just explain the logistics of the elections, and with more info to come. Midterms are approaching towards the end of the week, so this'll just be a good way for people to see how they're doing with classes, if they need more help, or how their grades are holding up. Student Council is planning a trunk-or-treat fundraiser on October 6th, so that'll be a really fun event. We're planning to have it in the parking lot of the high school. And we're gonna have candy, different treats, a raffle and fundraiser, so we encourage people to go to that and contribute. Also, at our recent advisory, students have filled out the NIESC survey, and we asked that parents also fill out the survey. And it's basically an evaluation of the high school, and it's to see if the school standards are meeting what students and parents are seeing day-to-day as well. And lastly, our sports teams are also doing very well as mid-season is also approaching. Excitingly, the football team is four and one. So, any questions?
Any questions for Jordan?
When's the trunk-or-treat? There's what?
It's October 26th.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much, Jordan, for your report. We certainly appreciate it, as we do all our student reps. You're more than welcome. I'll say what I said a few weeks ago. You're more than welcome to stick around with us and participate in the meeting, but we understand if you have other obligations.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, consent agenda items. I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Saban McGuire.
Yes, you can see that we have a number of schools who have submitted fundraising requests for the 2025 school year. Potter, Quinn, Dartmouth Middle School, the DeMello School, the Dartmouth SMA. I mean, I have to say, I'm so impressed with all of the efforts that are going on in the community amongst the different parent groups, and making sure that our students have opportunities just beyond what schools provide, but also coming from the community itself. So I think that tonight's consent agenda is truly representative of all that families are doing out there to support their children in Dartmouth. So I recommend that we accept, that the committee accepts, the fundraising requests for the 2024-25 school year.
Thank you, Dr. Saban McGuire. Questions from my colleagues?
Just a comment. Thank you all for participating in the parent-teacher organizations, and you really make possible so much more for our community than we would have without your efforts. The students benefit primarily, and we really, really appreciate it.
I would second that. And I didn't tally it up, but I have no doubts in the tens of thousands of dollars that are being fundraised.
It's absolutely huge, and it's greatly appreciated.
You want all one motion to approve them, or you want them individually?
I don't see why we can't do one motion for all of them.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion. We approve the Potter School PTO fundraising request, the Quinn School PTO fundraising request, Dartmouth Middle School PTO fundraising request, the DeMello School PTO fundraising request, and the DSMA Dartmouth School Music Association fundraising request, all for school year 24-25.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Nunes, second by Ms. Beckwith. On the motion, any further discussion? Chair hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, abstentions. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you again for all of those PTO members that are in the audience this evening. We certainly thank you for your support. And now the highlight of the night. I'm gonna turn it over.
It's a lot of pressure, Mr. Oliver, for the highlight of the night.
I'm gonna turn it over to our Superintendent of Schools for our district strategic plan.
Yes, so thank you. So we are truly excited to be able to share with the public tonight, the five-year, the public and the committee, the five-year district strategic plan for Dartmouth. We believe that, and I'll talk about this throughout, I will talk about this throughout our presentation, that we had a unique amount of representation in developing this plan. And as we go through some of the slides, we'll share with you some of the folks that were involved. And hopefully, as we share this publicly, no matter who you are or what part of the community that you serve, you will see that your voice has been taken into consideration and incorporated into the plan that we're going to present to you. We have a number of people here with us tonight, and we're gonna take some time to thank them at the end of the presentation, and that's just to keep them here till the end, so they can't sneak out, and we can take a photo. We want to make sure that we have a photo of all the folks that are here tonight, and we want to represent who you are and where you're from in the community in terms of developing this actual plan. So before we get started, I would like to invite Kathleen Smith from Teaching Learning Alliance to the podium. You'll have to sneak behind or through a few obstacles, but Kathy is here tonight representing TLA, Teaching Learning Alliance. TLA was the consulting group that we use to help to facilitate our process. Pam Gould was our main contact, and Kathy came on board with her. I have to say that I have a long relationship with Kathy Smith. Worked with her back in the day in Brockton, and I was really pleased that she was on board with us here in Dartmouth to help guide us through this process. So I wanted to invite Kathy to say a few words.
Thank you, Dr. Saban McGuire. And it is wonderful to be back in the Dartmouth community. I'm glad, June, you mentioned Dr. Pam Gould, who oversaw this process. It was actually my first time doing a strategic plan with a district as a consultant. And I know we've said this to our team a number of times, you have set the bar very high. It is the gold standard. And when I tell you in the end, after looking at all of your elected officials, John and Elizabeth certainly from your school committee, your town elected officials, a district that pays attention to its students and their voice that was heard loud and clear, to your teachers, to your families, to your community members, you have an excellent strategic plan that is a living document that will live probably beyond the five years, when you see, and I'm sure you've seen, the scope of what's ahead. Hours and hours were spent with this group, and I will tell you this, having been an education and a superintendent in five districts and dealing with strategic plans and community, to look at the way people were not afraid to share their ideas if something was missing, that empty chair that each of you honored, because they represented somebody else, or a group, or an entity. And you could hear that loud and clear as this strategic plan, you know, came to life. So again, I guess on a personal note, I am so pleased to come into this district and to see that you have Dr. June Saban McGuire. She talks about all the, and I know her, I know when she talks about the excitement, or just seeing the wonderful things that are happening, or when we met with students, and I sat back very proud. So this is back last February. We met with a focus group of probably about 20 students, freshmen, sophomore, junior, and seniors. And the one thing that they said, and I know her, and they said, Dr. McGuire actually came, and this was a young girl, one of my basketball games. Can you imagine the superintendent coming and thinking that we were that important? So I'm so proud. I listened to how wonderful everything has been. A lot of challenges, a lot of work ahead, but you have the right person in that job, and she has the right people supporting her. So congratulations to your entire community.
I really didn't expect her to say all that. I just want you to know that. That was not purposeful. But thank you, and that's where I learned everything that I know, so I'm okay with that.
Thank you.
So thank you. So we're going to now get into the actual presentation of the district strategic plan. I know that Jonathan's over there skillfully changing the screen so that the presentation is, yep, see, he's calm, cool, and collected. So now I can make changes?
Yeah.
I don't. It's not?
Is it on?
Oh. It's on now. Ross, you didn't turn the remote on for me, Dr. Tebow? Okay, so as Mrs. Smith was saying, the strategic, this is meant to, it's a five-year strategic plan, but please keep in mind that that doesn't mean as we work through the plan, there won't be adjustments or modifications based upon how we work through others to enact this plan. But this is meant to be the 2024 through 2029 plan. And what I also hope that you see as we go through the plan is that much of this work is actually happening. And so it's not that after, and hopefully the committee approves the plan this evening, but it's not as if we haven't been enacting some of what we know, the next right steps for moving the district forward. And so here is a snapshot of the many members of the district strategic planning team. And again, we'll invite them up at the end to take a photo. But hopefully, what you can see here is that there are a wide range of both internal school department teachers, TAs, or ESPs, I should say. We have administration. We have folks from the Select Board. We have parents. We have finance committee member. And what we worked toward, and we thought was most important, is we had three students also on our team. So when we submit the final plan and it's published, you'll see who all these folks are and what they represented in terms of where, what their representation was in terms of the community itself. So we talk a lot about what is our why, and it's something that we've worked on quite a bit in the district, at least since I've come in as a superintendent. And so it's always, all the work that we do, we recognize, always has to be grounded in what is our why. So for a strategic plan, why do we need a strategic plan, and why is it important to a school community? Our strategic plan helps create a shared vision and common purpose for every member of the One Dartmouth community. It identifies our district's mission, core values, goals, and the underlying theory of action that we believe ultimately will allow us to make good on our promise to the community of providing unparalleled opportunities leading to educational excellence for current and future generations. It helps guide us when making important decisions, identifying areas of need, committing resources, human, physical, and financial. It serves as a roadmap for our school district. And so one thing that was important to us early on was honoring the work of those who had been part of the initial district, core district strategic planning team. And with that team, they spent, I think it was almost two years, developing the portrait of a learner and what those five competencies are. Each of the five Cs were developed, again, with input from a range of community members, including educators, families, and caregivers, students at the high school level, and town officials. So while this representation is not quite complete, we are working on graphic design. It does incorporate the competencies that we've defined as developmentally appropriate to communicate exactly what we mean when we say Dartmouth Public School learners are critical thinkers and problem solvers. They're communicators. They are continuous learners. They're contributing citizens, and they're collaborators. And these initiatives, which are outlined in our strategic plan, will allow us to bring the portrait of a learner into focus across our district pre-K to 12. So next, we just wanted to remind people that this was, in fact, a comprehensive process that began in earnest back in the 2022-23 school year. During that year, the core of strategic plan of the planning team was formed and focused on developing the portrait of a learner. That is what was done. As a community, these are the essential skills and characteristics that all learners who pass through the Dartmouth Public Schools should be supported in mastering. We worked, we went on to focus the efforts of broader strategic planning work with the, again, many members of the One Dartmouth community, and we partnered with Teaching and Learning Alliance. We believe that our strategic planning timeline reflects an inclusive process that honors collective voices of the Dartmouth community. So again, some important, I think some important messages here are, who informed the district strategic plan? Stakeholder input. Well, that included the Portrait of a Learner survey, entry plan survey, listening tour, focus groups. We used comprehensive data sources and artifacts. The previous strategic plan was discussed. It was absolutely used as a resource to look at what was in the previous district strategic plan and see what needed to continue, we needed to continue to move forward. We used the AIR report, MCAS data, AP data, the Capital Improvement Plan, budget proposals, et cetera. So these were all of the different stakeholder groups and artifacts that were used to inform the district strategic plan. We were regularly reminded that although there were 36 people as part of our team, many of you whom are here this evening, we have what you see there as the empty chair. And we constantly, I think, reminded each other and held each other accountable for continuing to bring back the work we were doing to those that were our colleagues, community members, family members, et cetera, and to make sure that we were thinking about the kind of data and information that was being shared with us, even though those particular people may not have been in the room. So summary of the strategic planning process. You can see, Phase 1, we're building the foundation, and that came, again, even before I began in Dartmouth as superintendent, and that was around your Portrait of a Learner. But for me, coming in, was really building, my part in building the foundation was around entry planning and spending time getting to know the community, and we did that in multiple ways. We did that by visiting schools. We did that by visiting PTOs. We had a family forum. We sent out surveys. But the best way, I think, that we learned about what we needed to do in working with the Dartmouth community to move it forward was just listening to people. And so we did have focus groups. Again, TLA helped us to facilitate some of that. So there were quite a number of people whose voices are represented in what we're presenting to you this evening. So here with our mission statement. So there's always so much sort of angst over developing a mission, a vision, and your core values. But what a mission statement does for us is it explains who we are, and it highlights our fundamental reason for existing. When others read the mission statement, they should understand what our core role is as a school district. The mission creates fundamental questions for all organizations to ask. What is it that we do? Who benefits from our work? And what are the results of our work? So our mission statement, and hopefully, as I read through it, you'll be thinking about those three things. What is it that we do? Who benefits from our work? And what are the results of the work? So with a 36-person committee, again, including the voices of others, this is our statement. Together with students, staff, families, and community, we are committed to cultivating a safe, supportive, and inclusive learning environment that empowers all students to become compassionate, informed, and contributing members of our local and global community. And something that I think that really stood out as we did this work together was how grounded the folks that were involved, and again, through surveys, focus groups, et cetera, in the idea of supporting local community. That was something that came through, again, any of the sort of data collection that we did. The pride in Dartmouth and the idea that this was such a vital community, supportive of one another, was something that was clearly communicated throughout this process. And so as far as core values are concerned, again, something that was truly important to this group, and they took very seriously. There was a group that you can see that we have the acronym PRIDE. I already just mentioned that PRIDE came through as something that was important to people, and they definitely expressed a wish to have PRIDE be something that permeates throughout the entire plan. So for core values, we have personal excellence and responsibility, respect for self and others, inclusivity, equity, and belonging, diverse opportunities and student agency, voice and choice, very important to the group. That voice and choice was included, and most especially our students. And ethical commitments. And we talked a lot about ethical commitments in our district, and it's something that we have a lot of conversation about with our entire leadership team and with our educators. So remembering that core values should remain constant, and that they shouldn't change even in an ever-changing world. For vision statement, again, these are the things we look at the final product and think, oh, that's, you know, I can, that resonates with me. But when I tell you that the work that went into what I think people came to, to accept and say, this is what we were thinking, this was hours and hours of work. United as One Dartmouth, we are invested in the ongoing improvement of our community. So that's a pretty strong statement, and a statement that we're sharing with the rest of the Dartmouth community in different ways. For example, I was able to meet with Amy DiPietro from the Council on Aging and share that part of our vision statement with them, with that group. And she is going to take that and work with her staff to develop the second part of the statement, which is, Dartmouth Public Schools proudly offers unparalleled opportunities leading to educational excellence and success for current and future generations. Again, the idea of generational sort of support and what that means in contributing to the Dartmouth community was a really strong message throughout. So as far as a theory of action, an organization's theory of action represents a set of actions that will be implemented in order to improve the organization and help it reach its mission. So I'm not gonna read this theory of action to you, but what I will say is, if you take the time to read the theory of action, in many ways, the theory of action is the summarization of the entire strategic plan. And so you should be able to see in there the mission, the vision, the core values, the four areas of focus, and then ultimately what our goal is in implementing this strategic plan. And so now I'm going to invite Ross up. He's going to talk about the action He's going to talk about the action plan layout and give you an idea, an overview, really, of some of the high-leverage initiatives that are included in the plan.
Thank you, Dr. Saber McGuire. So our strategic plan, we really, as Kathy alluded to earlier, we want it to be a living, breathing document. And so in order to achieve that goal, we really believe that there's value in understanding the community as a whole, understanding exactly how the action plan is laid out. So in the broadest area, we see the focus area. We have four main focus areas. Then just beneath those focus areas, we have our objective. So our objective is a slightly more defined goal that we're hoping to achieve underneath that larger kind of umbrella. From there, we have our strategic initiatives outlined, and each of the focus area has multiple strategic initiatives. Our strategic initiatives are the strategies that we plan to employ in order to achieve the objective. At the most granular level, we have the action steps. These are very detailed, intended to be very detailed actions that the district will take in order to achieve our goal and to implement, fully implement our strategic initiatives. We also have, I don't know why it keeps jumping twice, we also have our proposed timeline for the work. Again, proposed because it is going to be a living, breathing document, so we may have to make adjustments along the way. But we wanted to clearly communicate to the community, here's the proposed and planned timeline that we intend to carry out. The next column here is the led by, and this is specifically only highlighting folks who are ultimately responsible for facilitating the work. This is not, this column is not indicative of every single person who's going to be part of all of this important work that's going on. We wanted to make sure that we highlight the fact that none of this work will be accomplished without the tremendous input of the community, without our educators, you know, and everyone that's part of the One Dartmouth community. And then the final column here really identifies the measures of success. These are multiple measures. With our, with each action step, we've identified a series of different measurements, if you will, to determine whether or not our action plan has been successful. So each, as I said, there are four focus areas. The first one is around teaching and learning, and our objective for teaching and learning is to support the varied needs of students and staff through best practices while promoting innovation in a horizontally and vertically aligned curriculum. For our second focus area, it is, are you hitting it too? That's the problem. I'm hitting it on this computer, and you're hitting it with a clicker. My fault. I apologize. All right. Our second focus area is Safe and Supportive Schools. And this focus area, it's all about ensuring that students and staff feel a sense of belonging, as well as, you know, attending to social-emotional well-being in our schools throughout the implementation of culturally and intellectually affirming practices and tiered supports. Focus area three, oh, focus area three is around family and community engagement, and it highlights the importance of engaging with families and community members as partners in our school, district, and in our students' continued success. Under this focus area, our goal is about enhancing and strengthening existing partnerships while also seeking opportunities to build new partnerships and strengthen new partnerships across the district. And then finally, focus area four is, you know, in many ways, the most important. It's budget and capital improvements, and our goal there is to enhance collaboration between schools, town government, and the community with the goal of creating a joint vision to address school funding, facility issues, and staff recruitment. And of course, without tremendous support in that area, none of the work is possible. So at this time, I'd like to invite Mrs. Poveo up to talk a little bit more about focus area one, teaching and learning.
Thank you, Dr. Tebow and members of the school committee, for this opportunity to talk about this most important work. I'd like to talk about our first, and obviously my most favorite, focus area, teaching and learning. So as mentioned, our first initiative under teaching and learning is one that you've heard, Dr. Tebow, when I talk about in great detail. And it's clearly an issue of importance. When we did analysis of our stakeholder and survey data, this was something that repeatedly came up across forums, across stakeholder groups, and that is around ensuring vertically and horizontally aligned curriculum pre-K to 12, and making sure that we are using data to inform our instruction around our needs. And obviously, we did, everyone did a great job in sort of talking about the Portrait of a Learner work that has already been done, that has also outlined the values and the things that we know to be important in our community. Additionally, when we talk about teaching and learning, I think when we hear the word "learning," we naturally tend to think about our students' learning, but of equal importance is the learning of our educators. Sorry, Dr. Saber McGuire. I'll, we'll hit the button.
Do you want me to?
No, it's okay, I got it. Sorry. So I'm talking about these initiatives and now I'll show them to you. Our second initiative is around designing professional learning opportunities that are relevant and support the professional growth for our educators and our staff. And so, as I was saying, I think sometimes when we hear "learning," we, our brain naturally sort of leans to thinking about our student learning, but it is of equal importance that we continue to foster the growth of our educators. And finally, we're talking about reimagining and expanding our educational pathways and opportunities for our students. And, you know, it's really about making sure that we create opportunities for our students to feel like they can grow to be their best selves, and that all of the things that are encompassed in our Portrait of a Learner are things that we're giving our students opportunities to practice, to refine, and to figure out, and to grow as, to be their best version of themselves. And so it might seem like the natural next step would be to talk about our action steps. But we're actually going to talk about our measures of success next. In a very similar way that we often do backward design when we're planning lessons and units, our first step is to think about, well, where do we want our kids to end up? What do we want them to know and be able to do? And so in the designing of these focus areas, it really made sense for us to say, what are our measures of success? What are our goals? What are our outcomes in this area? And then we can start to talk about what we would do to get there. So in that sort of backwards design model, these are certainly not the all encompassed. These are a few that we'd like to elevate. In our full plan, you would see all of those measures of success under teaching and learning. But three that we wanted to lift up and talk a little bit more about in detail tonight, again, is one you've heard me talk a lot about, is that published curriculum review cycle. When we're talk about, when we're talking about an aligned curriculum pre-K to 12, we have to talk about doing that in a secular, secular way, where we are repeatedly and consistently looking at the revisions that need to be made to our curriculum, looking at bringing in new, high-quality instructional materials when the time is necessary. Dr. Tebow talked about budget having the implications, and there are common threads in these focus areas all overlap. Budgeting is a huge part of curriculum review cycles because you can't afford to replace all of your things all at the same time. And we also have to keep in mind our educators who are doing this. We can't also ask them to do all new things all at the same time. And so you really need to have this cycle of revision and review of your materials. I could talk about it all day. Very important. Also, looking at just a published horizontally and vertically aligned curriculum, pre-K to 12. What we're doing with our students is certainly shouldn't be a mystery to people, and we want to have an accessible way for people. If you are someone who has a second grader in your life, and you want to know about what do second graders learn about in social studies, a way that you have an accessible way to look into what the kids are learning about, and the connections that it makes to our frameworks, the connections that it makes to the other things that they're learning about in their school. And finally, a published data dashboard that we would consistently report progress on. Those are those sort of metrics that we're looking at to measure our students' growth. Are the things that we're doing around teaching and learning yielding the results that we want them to yield? And so, you know, again, having a way that we can publish and access data for people to understand in a way that shows how our students are growing. So those are our measures of success, our outcomes. Then the question becomes, what do we do to achieve those? Again, there are far more than just these three action steps under teaching and learning, but three we'd like to elevate and lift up and talk a little bit more about tonight, is developing that curriculum review cycle. Developing it, but also implementing it. A curriculum review cycle is a multi-year cycle because you have to first figure out where you are in the cycle with your curricular areas, and then map out in a way that makes sense areas of priority. That takes looking at data and making decisions about areas of importance, and then mapping that out, not just in our core curricular areas, also, to be clear. We're looking at, right, we have new health and phys ed standards, making sure that we have the resources that we need to be able to implement new standards as they get updated. Identifying piloting and implementing high-quality, research-based curriculum materials. We've talked a lot about making sure that we have research-based, high-quality instructional materials in the hands of our teachers, in the hands of our students, and assuring that we continue to make sure that they are culturally relevant, up to date, and free of bias. And finally, identifying and developing a data dashboard related to student achievement. So what is the data that we're going to use? I'll just, in my very close world, we brought Foundations Integrity in to address foundational reading skills, right? So looking at the DIBELS data, is the data that we're getting back, which, yes, it is, I'll talk more about that in another meeting, giving us the results that we hope when we bring in materials to address with our students, are they doing the things that we hoped that they would be doing? And making sure that we are explaining to people, when I talk about phone name seg, if that's not the world you live in every day, making sure people understand what that means and how it's important to students' learning. And so, this is where I'm going to hand it over to Mrs. D'Anisio, who will talk to you more about focus area two.
I'm just going to come up and press all the buttons, okay? Focus area number two is Safe and Supportive Schools. So in this initiative, we're looking at how we are keeping students and staff physically safe in our buildings, as well as the social-emotional wellness and the sense of belonging, which we know is crucial to learning. So the initiatives in this focus area reflect our commitment to building a capacity of staff and students to support the social-emotional needs of the students, looking to research and evidence-based practices to identify culturally, emotionally, and intellectually affirming practices consistently across the district. We're also looking to expand our before and after-school program so that it exists at all levels, not just at the middle school and high school. Aligning our safety protocols and practices, again, across district consistently, and really living out the One Dartmouth theme that is at the forefront of this plan, so it becomes more than just a logo on a t-shirt. Although it's a nice t-shirt. How do we know we will be successful? So our D cap, our district accommodation plan, will be robust and full of real and effective interventions that help support all students. We'll have operational and well-funded, consistently funded, before and after-school program at the elementary, middle, and high school level. And all our schools will be practicing safety protocols within the district. Some of the things we're going to do in order to get there, again, just with the evidence base, looking at the evidence, looking at the research that exists to address the social-emotional wellness, as well as how we're teaching kids and making sure that we are addressing the needs of all students. And then Jonathan is going to come up and talk a little bit more about the safety protocol, which leads us to focus area three.
Thank you. Dr. McGuire, Saber McGuire, you found one way to get me off by holding the remote.
I did.
That's a good job.
Yes, thank you.
I won't be able to.
Thank you for recognizing my strategy.
Give me the hook anytime. But as Lori said, the social-emotional well-being of the, of students and staff is paramount, but also there's some physical things that we need to do to keep people safe. And they come in the form of intercoms and telephone systems and security cameras as we maintain the, the relationship with the police department and the fire department, and we talk about procedures and protocols. It's a good opportunity to ensure the safety and security of the schools.
Could you just speak up a little bit?
I'm sorry.
I guess the back of the room's having a little bit of trouble, or maybe Mr. Parodi can turn up the volume.
Thank you. Oh, that's better. Thank you. So I actually was finished, Mr. Oliver, but, but just talking about safety and security and the physical elements of that. So that transitions. Next slide, please. Oh, I do it? There we go. The next slide talks about family and community engagement. This speaks to initiatives such as communication, a communication team, committee, as well as communication plan, complemented by items like a communication system called Parent Square that we've embraced to give messages throughout families. It's the next level of communication for families because Parent Square allows control by the individual to receive messages when it's convenient for them, and which messages they receive. So it makes it easier than being bombarded with messages throughout the day, allows for that, as well as a communication, making communication smarter and more efficient, as opposed to more communication, just better communication. Those are some of the initiatives. Measure of success will be the survey. Dr. Saber McGuire, did you want to mention it?
No, you're doing, you're doing great.
Oh, great, okay. I can keep going, sure. Public and, do a communication plan coming from the communication committee. Increase diversified engagement opportunities, as you can see there, from all the town departments, as I mentioned. We've had our meetings with the police and fire, talking about communication and how to be better prepared together if there's an incident, that we can work more fluidly and more efficiently. And the action steps to those will be a survey that will go out to talk about that. Also, the increasing promotion of Parent Square and the release, which I'll talk about at the superintendent's report, of a new website that we've been working on feverishly in the background, which will have most current information, as well as links to a lot of the things that people need for the district. And that communication team will analyze the data to make sure we're communicating efficiently and accurately so parents and family and community are more informed and better informed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Galishaw. So district strategic plan focus area four is budget and capital improvements. So obviously, in order to make this plan a success, we need to identify, advocate for, and implement resources that support the plan and support student achievement. So the initiatives in this, in this focus area are to communicate and advocate for the instructional and operational needs of the district, and to do the same for the facility and capital improvement needs of the district. Some of the measures of success have some obvious things, like a budget reflecting the needs of the district, consistent and clear communication of the budget plan, capital improvement plan reflecting the needs of the district, and things like successful completion of capital improvement projects and other initiatives. Some of the key action steps are to communicate the budget plan to all stakeholder groups, to implement and monitor the effectiveness of the budget plan, to develop a 10-year capital improvement plan reflecting our facility and capital needs. Right now, we only have done a five previous to this, so we're going to expand that, and to implement and complete capital improvement projects.
Okay. Thank you. And so here on this slide, what you see is really a snapshot of the entire district strategic plan. I remember, I know a few minutes ago, I talked about the theory of action as sort of being a synopsis or a summary of the district strategic plan. And in the same way, this captures all of our, our strategic, our four strategic focus areas. Of course, it doesn't get into the initiatives, the objectives, the action plan, but by looking at this snapshot or dashboard, as we're calling it, folks should get an idea of where we are going as a, as the Dartmouth Public Schools over the we are going as a, as the Dartmouth Public Schools over the next five years. And something that I think is really important, just to point out, I mean, our strategic focus areas, if you look across different district strategic plans across the state or even across the country, you're going to see some similar focus areas, and that makes a lot of sense, right? That teaching and learning emerges as, as a primary area of focus, because of course, that's the work that we do every day. That's the most important work that we do, and yet we know without safe and supportive schools, family and community engagement, and budget and capital improvements, we can't get to the very work that's the most important work that, that we do as an organization. And that is, in fact, teaching and learning. The other thing that I would say is important around core values, and something that we, we talk a lot about, is pulling a core value out and talking about whether it's, it's, it's inclusion, inclusivity, equity, and, and belonging. You should be able to ask any one of us questions about how our organization is demonstrating a commitment through its core values to inclusivity, equity, and belonging. We should be able to speak to that because we're espousing that as a core value, and so how does that value exist in our organization? And so, again, here, what you're looking at is the dashboard of the entire strategic plan, includes the mission, the vision, the values, the strategic focus areas, and really importantly, the One Dartmouth and the pride, right? So we wanted to have symbolism that represented folks and what they shared with us about how they felt about being part of not only the Dartmouth Public Schools, but the Dartmouth Community. So when we present something like this, a strategic plan, like this is the work that excites us as educators, I wish that there was like singing and dancing and that we could be up, like have bright lights and, and all of those fun things that people go to concerts for. But I appreciate the folks that are here to listen to our presentation of the strategic plan, because really, when you get into the details of the plan, that's really where the work is. And as you will have an opportunity, because it will be published eventually, once the committee approves it, on our website, you'll be able to get a very detailed, you'll have the opportunity to have a very detailed view of what the entire plan looks like. So things that, again, we're so incredibly proud of, and we, we started off the year at our conversation, talking about who we are and why not do the things that we do in terms of education and our commitment to our students and our community. And one of the things that we're, as you can see with our tee-shirts, One Dartmouth, we want to move beyond just a slogan. You know, we want to move to a real, a real commitment to the idea that we're One Dartmouth, and for all of us as individuals to think through that lens of how we contribute to making sure that One Dartmouth is a reality and not just a slogan. And every one of us has the responsibility to contribute to that culture and that belief system. So you see on the, well, not quite the first day, but all our staff got their "We Are, We, One Dartmouth" tee-shirts, some, and many of you got them this evening. So "We Are, One Dartmouth," the Cushman School. "We Are, One Dartmouth," there's our DeMello School staff. "We Are, One Dartmouth," there's your, our Potter Elementary School staff. "We Are, the Quinn Elementary School." "We Are, the Dartmouth Middle School." And "We Are, Dartmouth High School." And all of the educators that are represented on the, in these photos, from teachers to our ESPs, to our custodians, to our cafeteria workers, to our lunch, people that are serving our students lunch, to our security staff. So, so many people are invested in the success of our school community, and it's up to us to support them and the work they do through the implementation of a strategic plan. But really, when it comes to implementation, the real work happens at the school level, it happens at the classroom level, and it happens between teachers and students. And so, again, as we made this, we were like super excited about this presentation, because that's what we do. We're behind closed doors going, this looks great, oh my God, we're so excited. And I see people looking going, hmm, you know, this is exciting, but I hope you feel like the same kind of excitement that we actually have about this work moving forward. And so, with that, I've already talked about "We Are, One Dartmouth," I truly believe that. We do have time for, well, are we, do we have time for questions from the committee? We do.
Yeah, well, we also have discussion under new business for the, it's up to the committee if we want to take it on right now, or, we also have it under new business.
That's right.
Discussion and vote on the district strategic plan, and somewhere in there, I want to throw in public comments, so.
Let's wait that.
That's fine. Whatever you want to do is fine.
What did you say?
I'm just thinking, probably waiting for, for that opportunity.
So, if it's okay with the committee, if we could just have the folks that are here come up and take a photo together, and so that they, they can, if they choose to leave, then they'll be able to do that. We wanted to capture a photo, though. So these are our, some of our district strategic planning team members.
Where are we going?
You're going.
Right here. Ross is going to organize us.
John?
Aren't there people from the finance committee that's just up here?
Oh, I don't know.
You know better than me.
Are the, are there, oh, it's Taryn, I think.
No, no, it's not me.
that was part of the committee. We're going to be discussing it in just a few minutes, but for those of you leaving, we know, I, I know for sure that it's taken a great amount of time to put this together, as a lot of, as well as a lot of planning, a lot of cooperation and communication, so thank you to all of those that were part of the strategic planning process. Next up, under old business, continuing discussion of the FY26 budget. And following this, I'm going to insert the, if it's okay with the committee, I'm going to insert public comment. So, Mr. Kylie?
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. So, you know, it's the, such a cyclical business with these, these fiscal years, and we're working on the FY26 budget, as you know. We just finished the fiscal year '24 end-of-year report, and I'll be reporting back to the committee at some point regarding a report for the, the end of the year. It's actually, I provided the full report to Mr. Oliver for his review and signature. It's, so, we're closing off fiscal year '24, we're living in '25, and we're preparing '26. We have begun meeting with all the district administrators and department heads regarding the fiscal year '26 budget. Obviously, you know, we're just in the process of finalizing the strategic plan here, so we're incorporating the strategic plan into our, into our budget and understanding what that impact is, so we're working with the schools to do that now. We have a proposed budget subcommittee meeting for October 28th, in which we would review preliminary budget numbers for fiscal year '26. So, got a pretty quick turnaround here. In three weeks, we've got to, you know, pull everything together from the strategic plan and from our meetings with all the schools, and present something to the budget subcommittee meeting on the 28th. So that's, that's where we are with budget at the moment. Thank you, Mr. Kylie. Questions?
No, it's, I'm going. Thank you for the update.
I will just say, I am available on the 28th. I did see your email, going to have a chance to respond.
I did respond, and I am available.
Perfect.
Thank you both.
So, look forward to seeing you on the 28th. And as always, thank you, Mr. Kylie, for your diligence in the budget process. Next up, before we get to new business, I'm going to invite anyone wishing to speak on any of tonight's agenda items. To do so at this time, we've allotted approximately 10 minutes for anyone wishing to comment on any of tonight's agenda items. We just ask you to keep your comments brief and approach the microphone.
I'm Bob Gobbin, Chairman of the Finance Committee. I'd like to thank you for your hard work in doing this whole strategic plan. I just have one question. Vertical and horizontal alignment of high-quality research-based curriculum, what is that?
Hmm, that's a great question.
So, so just for the members of the audience, we typically don't allow back and forth, but because of the, the cooperation that we're working with, with the Finance Committee and tonight's strategic plan, we certainly will entertain questions from, from the members of the audience.
It's a great question. So, vertical is K to 12, right? So it's K-12, so we want to make sure that all of our curriculum is aligned K-12, aligned not only within the district, but within the, as far as the state standards are concerned. So there are standards that are available, not that you would want to go to the DESI website and look at every single standard that exists, but what we do do here in Dartmouth is we spend time with our educators and curriculum committees and with our teacher teams, looking at what those standards are and aligning them, not only, again, K to 12, but even as important, if not more so, let's say, across first grade, right? So that when you enter or you visit any first-grade class in the Dartmouth Public Schools, you should see that students are working on the same skills, learning the same content, using the same resources, though that would be horizontally aligned. Vertically, and again, I'm going to talk K-5, is you would expect to see, for instance, the district recently adopted Bridges, which is the math resource. And so you would expect to walk into and visit K-5 classrooms, whether it's the DeMello, the Quinn, or the Potter School, and let's say it's a fourth grade. You would expect to see the same resources being used across all of those fourth-grade classrooms, and in terms of the pacing of what's being taught at that time, it should be within a range so that you can see that the kids, the students across the district have access to the same content, the same learning, the same materials as any classroom in the district. And you could, we could say the same thing for middle school, and we would repeat that for high school. I mean, high school can be a bit different, because there are different contents being taught in, in high school. For instance, math, you might have an algebra class and a geometry class. You would expect that, there would be different content being taught in those classes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else wishing to speak on any of tonight's agenda items? All right, I will take that as, that as a wrap, and we'll close our public comment time. Next up, under new business, discussion and vote on the district strategic plan. So we've now all had the opportunity, some of our colleagues have had the opportunity right from the start to be part of the process, but we certainly have had the chance to listen to the presentation this evening. We all received it earlier this week in an email attachment, so we could take a look at it ahead of time. So thoughts, comments, questions from my colleagues? I'll start over there on the other side of the table, Mrs. Amaral.
Thank you. First, I just want to say, that was an excellent question, Mr. Gobbin. It took me, still takes me time to think through, okay, what does that mean? So thank you for asking it, for, especially for all the people that really were afraid to ask, because it's important. Okay, so, I'm so supportive of this plan. I, just from the beginning and in hearing from folks who were part of the committee, and then hearing the report out of that committee, and I'll just say, like, starting from being so intentional to think about wanting all perspectives at the table and making sure that students, educators, the community were part of the process, and also in being intentional about that, recognizing that there still are people who are, who are not at the table, and being mindful about that empty chair reference was really impressive. And just the investment in listening to others' ideas, you know, fears. I'm sure I wasn't at that table, you know, I really was, you know, John and Bess can speak better to this, but I, I can only imagine, like, fears, right? Questions come up in, as folks are thinking through what this might mean for a plan with such large impact, potential impact. Like, that's, again, the student voice and choice, incredibly important. And in my tenure on the committee, I do not know that we have paid that much attention since I've been on the committee to that, as well as rec, I don't mean to look right at you, I just recognizing while we need to have the, you know, the supports and resources for our students, it's equally important, if not more important, to have the resources and the tools for our staff, and threading that through the safe and supportive school, right? That, the mental health of our students, the mental health of our educators, we're all in this together, and that vision of making that generational connection. I really look forward to seeing that come to fruition and look back, you know, 20, 30 years from now, to look back to say, wow, the impact that this plan made, because our students are going away and doing lots of different things, whether they're going to college, or going into the workforce, going into the military, and coming back and wanting to be part of this community again, and that retention, what that can mean for the town of Dartmouth is, is, has, has great potential. So I'm, I just, that's so exciting. And all the teaching and learning stuff, feeling the passion and the commitment from all the folks that are coming up, you talk about like the leadership team coming up, and just the incredible work that's being done behind the scenes, and just the intentionality about what, what does this look like? How, how many things can we change? And what are on the plates of our students and our staff to make these changes, and scaffolding it, and, and, and building out a plan that's, you know, it may take a while to get there, but we're going to get there because we have the end goal in sight. So, I think that's all I'll add, but I am personally very excited about it, and, and just enjoyed reading it and learning more about it. And at every level, it's just the thought and the commitment really comes through. That's it.
Thank you very much, Mr. News.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, as one of the committee members that, that was on this committee, and thank you to Dr. Saban McGuire for putting me, or asking me to be on this, and, you know, in my tenure, this is the first time I've sat in on one of these, and it was personally a learning experience for me, and I learned a lot from it. My thanks to everyone that was on that committee. I know I've kind of probably said this before, but I'll say it again, it was a great committee. I mean, Pam and Kathy did an outstanding job facilitating this, and there was, you know, the old adage, you know, no dumb questions type of deal. But... But we sat there and we went through, and you could ask a question about what was going on, or if you changed an "I" to a "we," or whatever type of deal. You know, Mrs. Paveo was our resident scribe, changing, literally changing things on the fly to put it in, to see what it looked like. You know, we get a thumbs up or a thumbs down, you know, and it was great to have that. The students that we had sit on this committee, and I know, again, I've said it before, unbelievable. I mean, they, they were not afraid to put their two cents in. Believe me when I tell you that, that, you know, they sat there, if there was something they didn't like, or they were, they were not afraid to ask that question, to make sure that they understood it, and even in some of the focus groups that we were working on, type of deal, asking questions about things, type of deal. I wish Kathy was still here, because I was just curious if they still had those four big sheets when we did these four focuses. And, you know, the first group going through each one would have been great, but then the rest of us adding to it as we went through was just unbelievable. I mean, when you sit here and, you know, Kathy was right, and everybody's right, you know, the amount of time that went into it to do this was just unbelievable. But I think what we've got here is something to really be proud of and to hang our hat on, and, you know, I'm looking forward to seeing how this gets, you know, getting this implemented and moving forward with it. So, my, again, my just, my thanks to everyone that participated in this, this great piece of work. I think for our students and our staff and our community, this is something we can be very proud of, I think.
What I would say is, this is an extraordinary effort from so many standpoints, but two that I would point out is such a large group, and to focus such a large group is difficult to do, all of whom have different wants and needs and agendas. So, that is so impressive. The second thing is to have accomplished this in such a short period of time. Having done a lot of strategic plans in my lifetime, my working lifetime, I, it, this is very impressive, so comprehensive. And, you know, I also know that for the folks that are from the school, work in the school district, it is hard to do your everyday job and to be also focused on the future and to kind of go back and forth. And so, I compliment all of you. And then for the folks from the community, to bring this investment and this time commitment to this effort is so appreciated and so important. So, so, this is just really impressive. I'm very excited to watch this be implemented and also to see, to measure the metrics and measure the accomplishments as we go through. So.
Thank you.
So, I also was on the committee and very grateful to be asked. It was a wonderful experience, and yeah, we can't emphasize enough how amazing it is to get, you said 26, but I thought it was 27.
37.
37. 37 people together, not be bickering, moving forward, and though not bickering, arguing over particular words because people cared so much. I've never been part of such a large group that was so serious and allowed everyone to have input. So, I do think it's a great document. And I don't know, I have, like, two little niggly things about it, which, one is that we're not all teachers, we're not all, we don't know all the jargon. So, in the theory of actions, we assume that everyone knows what SEL is, engage in review of current SEL curriculum through curriculum review cycle. I just wish that we would write social-emotional learning there, because we want this to be an accessible document to the parents and to the community. And because we did argue over, not argue, well, argue, we discussed words. And we thought words were important. That in the great letter at the front of the document, in the letter, under the mission, the word engaged is not used in the document. The word in mission, in, under mission, is contributing. It should be the same in both the letter and in the document. And...
Oh, you're talking about the letter at the beginning of the, okay. Got it.
Just because, I mean, I feel like it's all part of the document.
Yeah, good catch.
And, and then the other thing is core values in the letter of introduction.
Didn't, did we change that? I thought we did. We...
Okay, so that wasn't part of the presentation.
No, what you have in front of you is still in draft form, and so, we actually did, you'll be happy to know we caught that.
The thing in pride?
Yes, and we're making changes.
For the voice and choice thing?
Yes, we are doing that.
Okay. And lastly, in terms of accessibility to our greater community, which I'm part of, just in the document above the mission statement, we talk about ex post facto data, and I don't feel like that's a very accessible phrase. I feel that we should speak in a language that everyone understands. But I don't have a problem with it, because I looked it up on Google, and, not that I could fully explain it to you, but I got it.
We can make some, we can make those changes, that's...
But it's great to know...
That is why it's in draft form, it's not a published document.
So, and this is what we're voting on, so I wanted to bring that up. But it's great to know what we do, why we do it, and where we want to be as a school, as a community. So, thank you to everyone who worked on it, and thank you to all of those who will work on implementing it.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I will, I will also echo and agree with, I think, throughout this, I think it would help, a lot of us at the table and in the room are probably familiar with many of the acronyms that are used in education, but for the general public, I think it may be helpful to spell it out for everyone.
Sure, that's no problem.
So, that would be my only, my only recommendation as far as editing goes. I will say that, you know, what else is there to say? I think it's important that we recognize, for those people that are watching at home or will watch, that this document is a product of months and months of collaboration between multiple stakeholder groups, from town officials, parents, students, community members, as well as members of the administration team, instructional team, and school committee. I'm excited, for one, that we finally have, I feel, some substance, plan with some substance to move forward with and build our future, our next five years. And not only that, but as we go to town meeting, or we go to other meetings with town officials, we certainly have a why as to why, why we need this, why we're doing this. So, I think it helps, and I think this is something that our instructional professionals in the classrooms certainly will be grateful for, our teachers, our educational support professionals, you know, I think this puts some substance behind what we're doing in this district, and really, how are we going to take this district to the next level? And I personally would love to see, I know we're a great district, or I should say, we're an exemplary, we're an extremely good district, and I think we have some potential there to move it up a notch. It'll take some work and some effort, but I'm excited for the future. So, thank you, Dr. Saban McGuire.
Thank you.
Thank you to everyone else that was part of this team, and I look forward to seeing where this goes. At this time, if there's any other questions?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just taking a step back with what Beth said about some of the mnemonics type of deal, maybe a page with all the abbreviations and what they actually stand.
Yeah, we can do a key.
Yeah, a key in there type of deal, so that they would, you know, people will know what they're looking at. Just a thought.
Yep, we can do that.
Other than that, I'm fine.
Perfect. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the district strategic plan.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion that we approve the school district achievement plan for school year 2024 to 2029 as presented, with the necessary small minor adjustments.
Second.
So, we have a motion by Mr. News, a second by Mrs. Amaral. On the motion, any further discussion? Chair hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Great, that's wonderful news. Thank you so much. And again, thank you so much to the committee for all your support, because you have been giving us ongoing support over the past, really, seven months that we've been working on this.
Well, thank you, and I also like to, before they leave, thank our members of our Finance Committee for joining us here this evening. We did extend an invite to the Finance Committee, as well as the Select Board. Select Board was in session this evening, but we certainly appreciate those of you that were able to make it. Next up, school committee policies, Section A, foundations and basic commitments, first reading.
Mr. Kylie, are you going to jump in on that?
Sure.
I know you have it right there in front of you.
Yeah, I can start us off. So, so, we have begun our cyclical review of policies. We are planning to bring forward a policy section every other month to you. Attempt to bring forward a full section as best we can, and I'll talk about some specifics that go along with that as we, as we get through this. So, we've, we've brought Policy Section A, which is called, which is called Foundations and Basic Commitments, to you this evening. So, the school committee, so, the administration met in August and early September to review these policies, the policies in Section A, and then brought them to a school committee policy subcommittee meeting on September 16th, at which time, we agreed to bring them forward. We had discussion about them and agreed to bring them forward to you folks for a first read tonight. So, I'll walk you through what you, what you have before you. In your packet was a little summary statement that I wrote, but then a summary page that shows the, all the policies in Section A, their policy title, and what the recommended actions were for those. So, hopefully, that's helpful to sort of organize. As we go through this, we'll hopefully continue to, you know, continue to do that for each policy section that we're able to tackle. The first policy for which we're recommending a change is Policy AD, which is mission statement. Obviously, tonight, we've, you've now agreed that we have a new mission statement, so that's timely. This, this Policy AD revision is reflective of that. I included both the prior policy in your packet, as well as the, as the revised policy. Really didn't make a lot of sense to redline the old policy, since all of the words changed from one to the other, so I just included the old one for your review, in case you, you know, wanted to see what, see what it looked like prior to this. So, that's the, that is the first policy, and I guess if there's any questions about that, or things we want to talk about, discussion, we could do that now.
I think Policy AD is pretty straightforward based. Yes.
Easiest one.
So, once again, the mission statement in this new school policy does not reflect the mission statement in our new strategic plan. Again, that word contributing instead of engaged, I don't know why.
I was contributing.
But...
Why is it just contributing?
Yeah, but in the...
It should say engaged.
It should say engaged, because...
I know what she's saying.
In the strategic plan, the mission statement says informed, oh, no. Oh, that was for the other one, never mind. Okay, so at the beginning of the message, forget that, that was for the other one. Together with student staff, families, and community is what the policy says, and the mission statement, where's the broader community? Okay, I'm confused. I think I'm mixing things up.
Local and global community?
We can, we can certainly...
Yeah, the broader, somewhere we say broader community, and other, and then other places we say community.
Might be in the letter?
Oh, it's in the letter. So, it's not the policy, but it's back to the letter.
Oh, okay.
That the word broader is inserted. I just want them to, both, both the letter to be...
To be aligned, yeah.
Aligned.
Yep. So, we're going to make that change and make sure that's reflected in the policy as well.
Right.
Okay.
That was it, because it is straightforward, and I'm cool with that. I was getting the letter and the policy mixed up.
As long as you're cool with it.
Okay, so, since this is a first read, we're not asking, you know, anyone to vote on anything tonight. So, the next policy for which we're recommending a change is Policy ADDA, background checks. So, similarly to mission statement, this is a full rewrite. The old policy's from 2012, so it's been a bit. In 2012, the whole fingerprinting process that we're required to do now didn't even exist, so it's about time we get up to speed here and update that policy. We, I will say that I can assure you that operationally, we have complied with what this proposed policy is, and I've been here since then, you know, since that was implemented, and I can say that we are in compliance with, with the Department of Criminal Justice guidelines and, and this policy. So, this policy reflects actually practice as it currently exists. So, if you have any questions on that, I'd be happy to field them. Questions on ADDA? Remember, this is just a first reading, anyone?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kylie. Okay, thank you. So, the next policy we ask you to consider is a brand-new policy. So, ADDAR is the reflective of the Department of Criminal Justice Information Services model policy. So, MASC recommended that this policy be included in addition to ADDA, which you just took a look at, in order to make sure that we are specific in regards to our process, and that in the instance that the Department of Criminal Justice were to audit our, our process, we would have regulations, procedures in place that reflected exactly what they're looking for. So, based on that recommendation of MASC, it made sense to add this policy that previously didn't exist. Questions? Cut and dry.
Sounds wise. Sounds wise.
I think it makes sense. Okay. So, those are the policies that we're asking you to revise or change, but I just wanted to fill you in because there were some other policies in Section A that, first of all, there were some policies in Section A that were identical to the MASC policies and did not, you know, require a change from us, some policies that, you know, were currently in place that made sense. But there were some that we have not brought forward yet. So, the policies that relate to the Title IX process and discrimination and harassment on the advice of our legal counsel, so there's some court injunctions at the moment relating to those policies. So, at the advice of our counsel, they have been revising recommended policies in the background, waiting for these injunctions to clear up so that we can move forward with revised policies. So, at this point, those are sort of on hold on the advice of counsel. We have one other policy, ADF, which is the School District Wellness Program, which we have a wellness committee in the district, if you may or may not know, and they meet four times a year and are going to take a look at this policy. They did some work last year on it and are going to take a look at that prior to bringing it forward to the policy subcommittee for revision. So, those are, that's where we stand with Policy Section A. Again, if there's anything that comes up that you think of prior to bringing it forward to, you know, for a vote, we'd be happy to revisit that. We are, this month, going to be working on Policy Section B internally so that we can move it forward with a policy subcommittee meeting scheduled for, tentatively scheduled for November 18th for Section B. Section B is School Committee and Government Operations. It's extensive, so it's some heavy, some of the heavier lifting that we will be doing in this process, but we're going to dig in and get it done, so.
Well, I certainly appreciate you tackling this, Mr. Kylie. And just as a reminder, this was just a first read. We'll bring these back for a final vote. And thank you to our policy subcommittee. All right. Moving right along, Superintendent's Update.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. Mr. Kylie, did you want to start with the update on town meeting?
Sure, why not?
Yeah, you're on a roll.
On a roll at the moment, right? So, we just wanted to give you a quick update. So, we had received word from the Capital Improvement Planning Committee that several of our requests were approved to be placed on the town meeting warrant. Technology hardware replacement for $300,000, bathroom renovations for $150,000, interior and exterior painting for $75,000, energy efficiency projects for $120,000, music equipment for $65,000, and generator replacement at the Quinn School for $150,000. So, a good number of projects. We're obviously thankful for their support and look forward to completing these projects, some of which we'll be able to do, you know, start right away and, you know, after approval and get those underway. The two projects which were not approved at this time were the high school track reconstruction, which, to be honest, we wouldn't have been able to do in the winter anyway, that part of it. And it's not, my understanding from speaking with some folks on the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, it's not that they don't support that, it's that they wanted to consider there's some other projects in town that may be able to be done at the same time, playground projects, that we're going to take a look at and see if vendors can complete, if one vendor can complete multiple projects. And so, my understanding is that this will be, that'll be considered in the spring. The other thing that didn't receive funding is the stadium renovation project at this time. But, so, but again, we're thankful for all the support that we've gotten in terms of getting some of these things done, so.
No, agreed.
Thank you for the update. Questions?
Thank you, sir. Thank you to CIP.
Is there any design work that's involved with the track that could be done ahead of time, or?
Very, very basic design work. It really, it would be by the design, by the, the construction company can do design and build, so that's hopefully...
It's not a time, it's not a time consumer.
No.
Okay.
No, it should be able to be, if we do receive funding at the beginning of June, depending on how many other tracks get scheduled before us, we hopefully could get it done.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kylie.
So, I'll just jump right back in. So, again, with the approval of the district strategic plan, part of the way that we want to share with you our progress toward meeting with success is through the way that we structure our reports to you, through the superintendent's report and just other opportunities to report out to you so that it isn't just a once or twice-a-year opportunity for you to hear about the progress that we're making. Part of the way that we have structured our superintendent's report is with that in mind, with not necessarily being as intentional about it, so as we move forward, we'll be more intentional about tying what we're reporting out through, whether it's the superintendent's report or presentations, back to how that connects to the strategic plan. And so, with that, under Teaching and Learning, again, I'm just going to mention, and just a brief update on our MCAS performance, you can see that Dartmouth Week did a story, and so we really appreciate that, that they're actually taking the time to really look into and have conversations with us about where we are in terms of our MCAS performance. So, as you could see, the results have had both highs and lows, and we plan on doing a detailed presentation at one of our November, or at our November, I think there might only be one, school committee meeting, but some key points that I think are worth sharing tonight. First, we're incredibly proud to announce, and you saw it in the Dartmouth Week article, that the Quinn School has been recognized as a school of recognition. I see Dr. Thomas is here tonight and want to congratulate Dr. Thomas, and I also see Mrs. Parisi's here, and we had a celebration at the Quinn School last week. We plan on coming out. We were supposed to be there. Just, I didn't have my clock calibrated properly, but we will be out to celebrate with you because, again, we're incredibly proud of the work that you did, and it's quite a distinction. The honor is based on the school's exceptional progress toward meeting its own goals. And again, when we come out and when we present to you in November, we'll talk more about how, what metric that is used to make that determination, but the Quinn was one of 27 schools, I mean, 57 schools across the state to be recognized. So, congratulations to the faculty and, again, all involved with supporting the Quinn School. And at the same time, I want to say that there's hard work happening across the entire district. We could certainly see that in our MCAS scores, and MCAS are not, is not the only data point we're using to assess our students' progress. So, again, lots of great work happening. For example, as you saw, 55% of our students, district-wide, met or exceeded expectations in math and science, and that was an 11% increase over last year, and that's a district-wide accomplishment. So, again, the hard work that goes into that by our teachers and our staff members cannot be underestimated. We are just about returned to our, and you hear the state and at the national level, them referring to pre-2019, pre-COVID achievement, so we're right about there in math, and in some cases, we've even exceeded our 2019 results. And we also recognize that there's much work to do. We can see that in literacy, we are seeing increasing achievement, and at the same time, we can see that we have not yet reached, not, we haven't even gotten back to 2019 achievement results, and it's a pretty significant gap, and that's work that we're doing. And again, tying it back to the district strategic plan, you can hear, again, Mrs. Paveo up here talking about Teaching and Learning, pre-K to 12, research-based horizontal and vertical alignment, research-based, high-quality resources, and as we've said all along, it really is the responsibility of the school district to provide, to provide those resources to our educators and to our students. So, we'll again be presenting to you in November a more detailed overview of MCAS scores across the district. As far as personnel, under, again, HR, budget, capital improvements, Mr. Kylie already spoke to, but we are excited to share with you that we do have a new, yet experienced behavior specialist who's going to be starting with us on October 28th, and so we're excited about being able to find somebody, and it's just, you know, that we waited, we were patient, and we believe that, I know Mrs. Denise would agree, that we believe that we found the right person to help support our teachers and our students with their social, emotional learning needs. That's Sal, Mrs. So, I'm trying to weave that in, so.
That's good. I appreciate that.
So, that's something we're excited about, where I'm pretty sure we're onboarding that halftime PE health position, and so we're still searching for a person for the facilities department, and another real area of challenge for us is the ELL teacher that we need to share between, the English language acquisition teacher, that's what that position, you're welcome. So, we are not the only community across the state that is struggling to find the appropriately licensed personnel for that particular position, but we are working toward and hope to share with you soon what we are doing in lieu of, because we have to take action because our students right now need to be getting the direct services that are, that they're entitled to. So, we are going to have to probably bring in a teacher, somebody who's got a certification, but not necessarily that ELL certification, but at the same time, support them to best meet the needs of the students who do need to be provided direct service. So, other than that, we're in, we're in pretty good shape. We still, you know what I'm going to say, monitors, substitute teachers, ESPs, food service workers, all those folks are, as I said earlier, everybody that has one of those roles, no matter what role you have in the district, you're critical to the operation of our school district and to supporting our students, so we're going to keep working on that. And I, again, thank Kate for her commitment to that and working and onboarding people on, really on what is a pretty constant basis. So, pretty, we're in good shape. Mr. Kylie already talked about capital improvements. Did you have anything else? You were, you were good. So, the other thing that I want to tie back to the district strategic plan is our efforts to strengthen communication throughout the district. Just recently, as a matter of fact, just last week, myself and a group of Dartmouth educators, including Mr. Galishaw, had the opportunity to participate in a parent square summit. It was, people were really from all over the country, but I'm pleased to share that we learned quite a bit, and we look forward to employing parent squares, many features, the beauty of having a big group from a representation across the district is everybody has a different role, a different perspective, and ways in which we can utilize parent square to be even more effective than it already is. And so, again, back to the district strategic plan, Mr. Galishaw is going to talk about the efforts with parent square and talk about where we are with our website.
Thank you. As Dr. Saban McGuire mentioned, the parent square, we're all in on the parent square software. I had Mr. Christopher, Dr. Tivo, Dr. Saban McGuire, and two instructional tech people came, learning different methods of how to use it for communication. I put the founder of the software together with Mr. Christopher, so in a room for an hour, to discuss how the software can better serve athletics and coaching and the communication of that. They were both excited. I think the developer got some free consulting of how to, where to go, and Mr. Christopher felt like he was going to make changes to the software, so it's wonderful. But, so that we can increase communication, better communication, and that parents and students can have control of that communication, so you can find out what you want to know when you want to know it, and all that you want to know about the district. Again, part of strategic plan and communication. As I mentioned quickly before, we are developing a new website. We've been going through painstakingly, going through every link in the old website, finding old documents and broken links and such, so we have a target date of the end of the month, October 29th. We're in the process now of trying to redirect all the domain name controllers that are out there in the internet to go in the direction of the new site, so that'll be something we'll be working with the, those companies to do so. We still are, it's an ongoing thing. It'll always be, it will never be done because it's, there's always new information, always changing information, but we're excited about that. So, as a good foundation of things like calendars and menus and bus routes and things like that, what the parents need, what the families need, to have that base of information. And then the ongoing information will come from parent square, the dynamic information. So, that's exciting, both on those two fronts. I just want to add quickly off of what Mr. Kylie said, I am currently reviewing the I policies, that's information. So, down the road, we'll be doing that after I've cleared them through the Technology Committee as well as the Policy Committee. So, we're recommitting the Technology Committee to look at that, so I'll be asking two members of the school committee who are assigned to the Technology Committee to find possible dates. Do you know who the other person is, Mr. Oliver? You're one of them.
I believe it's just me that's...
Oh, just so far? Always love to have two people.
Or is it? Is it just you?
I'd love to have two.
I thought there was two.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
I'm sure it's written somewhere.
We can look it up, but...
Yeah, we can look it later, yeah.
I'm in, I'm in.
That'd be exciting.
You got your second.
I won't accept three, that's a quorum, and I won't accept that. So, we'll just have two, so that's good. I don't want that responsibility of having a quorum. But, we will do that probably in the month of October to take a look at some ongoing things right now, and the changes are coming, but then later, of course, look at the policies so we can present it to the Policy Committee, which will then probably get you a meeting, if it's every other month, Mr. Kylie, will probably be more like May, by the time we get to I, so that's good.
Sounds good.
That's quickly. Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Galishaw.
Okay. So, next, I'd like to give you an update as to how we're doing with our Dartmouth High School internship program, and again, Mr. Paradi provided me with this information, and I want to tie it back to district strategic plan and do that in a way of saying, you know, this is an example of giving students more opportunities through voice and choice and hearing what kinds of, excuse me, opportunities they'd like to engage in. And so, 90 students have enrolled to start the school year, and more are expected next semester, and that will bring us to about 100 or more students in this year's program, and that increases participation from last year, which was around 94 students. So, the highlight is that the quality and visibility of the program has obviously resonated with our students, but again, strategic plan, we have been able to partner with organizations, local and regional, to expand the network opportunities for our students. For example, through, again, Mr. Paradi's leadership, we built out a program with South Coast Health Care to include 10 opportunities for healthcare students across St. Luke, Charlton Memorial Hospital. He's, Mr. Paradi's working with Dave McCready, President and Chief Executive Officer of South Coast Health. We opened the program last year, and again, students are going through an orientation process, and they are going to have an opportunity to work across these healthcare organizations in preparation for what they want to do after high school. Additionally, this year, we were able to welcome several local establishments, again through Mr. Paradi's advocacy, including Chase Farm Veterinary Hospital, KIA of Dartmouth, Alden Court Nursing and Rehabilitation Center, the Cask and Pig Restaurant, I Health Vision Center, and Maderos and Sons Construction. So... Center, and Maderos and Sons Construction. So more opportunities for students to get out into their community and experience internships that will help to inform them as to what their next steps are. Bay Coast Bank Grant, we were awarded a $1,250 appropriation to renovate one of our computer science labs at the high school, and use those funds in donor choice, which matched the donation. So you know, Mr. Parati's really good at finding matched donations. And so there is $2,500 worth of new technology soon to arrive and be installed in the new lab. So thank you to Bay Coast Bank for that. Our DHS TV media studio students are working with the Bristol County Sheriff's Office to produce criminal justice PCA commercials to support and spotlight the local public relations of their program. And actually, it's just passed, but Captain Raposa presented to the media students just to start the production process. This is, gives them an opportunity to be engaged in a real-world production for their students and maybe even do some onsite filming. And so thank you to Mr. Parati, who I know is going to be sharing more good news coming out of the, the high school media studio, because they're doing lots of really great work. I know I talked to Mrs. Amaral recently, and I know even her daughter, May, is now involved in the broadcasting of the local high school news show. So as far as, you know, what's going on out in the district, this past week, we were engaged in school visits. We're in schools all the time. But as I've shared with you, on a bimonthly basis, we're in there for a very targeted business, I mean, visit. And so we've been out in schools and classrooms. And for our first visit, it was really about engaging teachers in conversation about how the school year is going. Really, how was the start of your, very simple. How was the start of your school year? Have you had a positive start? Are there things that we can do to support you? And I am pleased to share that there is an overwhelming sense of positivity across the school district. And we've been in all of our schools. That's not to say that we don't have challenges, because we do. But the positive energy that our educators, that our school leaders have brought to the start of the school year has been truly impressive. And I was so happy to walk through classrooms and schools just this past week. So it was only this, so we're a couple of weeks into the school year, and just to be able to be, get a sense of climate and culture in our schools. And that, I would say, I would attribute that feeling to every one of the schools in our school district. As far as the community engagement piece, again, going back to district strategic plan. So I'm being very intentional about saying this tonight. I won't always, district strategic plan, I won't always do that. But I just want to make sure that we're making those connections between the work that we're doing and what exists in our strategic plan. Because everything, in a sense, that we report out to you, you should be able to tie back to our strategic plan. And so community engagement is truly important to us. I met with Dina St. Pierre. She is the Director of Library Services here in Dartmouth. And we're pleased with the individual outreach that schools have with the local library. And at the same time, we recognize that there's room for us to strengthen our relationship and our partnership. And just for one, this spring, what we will be working toward with our elementary schools is that all of our fifth grade students will visit the library, either the, is it the South?
Southworth.
Southworth Library, and then the newer library.
Northbridge.
West Dartmouth. So we will have a field trip opportunity for them to go to the library, to receive a library card. And while that happens, like the Potter has easy access, right? In some cases, the DeMello has easy, easier access. And then we have the Quinn, which is a little bit off the beaten path. So we want to make sure that, not really off the beaten path. I mean, you're right in the middle of everything, actually, the Quinn School. But we know that the Quinn School isn't located in close proximity to one of our libraries. So we are going to make sure that we provide a way for our students to be able to access the library. So that's just a start. And we look forward to being able to grow those kind of partnerships so that they become embedded in what we do. Because I so appreciate what the schools do, and but, and we want those individual efforts. And at the same time, we want to systemize things so that they happen regardless of the individual that is sort of reaching out to the library or any other organization. And just, again, stealing from the Monday Minute, but goes along with what we're talking about in terms of community engagement, our cheerleader coach, Rebecca Braga, the chair program, she was, if you remember, last year, our cheerleaders visited the Dartmouth Council on Aging, and they participated in their weekly dance class. They did that again this past Friday. And so by all accounts, the student athletes had a great time. And the senior citizens that were part of that experience, they were excited. They expressed their appreciation toward the girls. And it's a great example, again, of community service outreach and partnership. And we're looking forward to welcoming them to our October 18 football game. So if you remember, we did that last year. So now we want to see those kind of opportunities just become embedded in what we do every year. And so I know our student representative talked about what was going on with sports. You know, the football team, they came back after dropping their first game. I'm so happy to see that they were, and it sounds like it was a great win. We also have our field hockey team that just supported, that just participated in community outreach, supporting Morgan's message, which is about raising awareness about suicide prevention. So we have, again, the field hockey team engaged in that kind of community work. And it, and we owe that to our coaches who are taking those steps to ensuring that we have that type of community outreach. So those are the things that we're going to keep building off of. And as we come and report out to you, what, what is our progress, we'll be able to say to you as a committee, to the public, well, here is where we are in terms of building community partnerships. Here are some of the, just some of the successes we've had. So we're excited to continue that kind of work. And I think that's all I have.
There's certainly a lot going on.
There is, a lot of exciting things.
Thank you for that update. Questions from my colleagues.
Mr. Noons?
Just, just one, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Seba McGuire, you talked about the interns, and that's great. What grades does that encompass? Do you, are you, do you know what grade?
It's the seniors.
Just the seniors? Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Noons, I want you to know that I'm keeping myself from talking about the band.
That's what you could do.
Because I learned that last year.
No, you're fine.
No?
I'm good. Not all about me. No, I'm good.
Well, the band is all about you.
No, it's not. It's the kids. It's the students.
Yes. The band, reporting out on the band at school committee.
Thank you very much. Just an update, just curious, who will be attending the MASSE, MASSE Joint Conference? We have four of us? That's all right.
I've been before.
The only reason why I ask is I'm just trying to get the committee's feel on whether or not you would be interested, or if anyone's going to be around on Friday afternoon for the delegate assembly, in which the school committee here at the table, maybe at the next meeting, we take up all the MASSE resolutions, and then we'd vote on them, and then we'd elect a delegate to attend the delegate assembly, where you would vote on behalf of the Dartmouth School Committee around, along with all the other school committees in the state. So before I go and, you know, waste everyone's time on debating these resolutions at our next meeting, I believe, if I were to look, it's not until Friday afternoon, the delegate assembly, and that's at 3:15.
I'm there Friday, so I can do it.
You can do, you'd be willing, you'd be willing to do it?
I would be willing.
Good.
Is it long? Is it like a really long thing?
I cannot answer that, as I've never been as a delegate.
Nobody?
Nope.
Oh, okay.
But I would, it's just something that I, you know, I think I'd love to see the Dartmouth School Committee, you know.
I'll do it. Have a voice, yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you for that. So we'll look to.
I might be texting you at 9:30 PM.
What did you get me, what did you get me into?
Yes.
You know, certainly, if you, if you have to leave, you have to leave. But, no, that sounds good. And then this way, it gives us the opportunity to hash out some of these resolutions that MASSE has put forward for consideration. So if we could maybe add that, when I meet with our superintendent to plan out the agenda, we'll make sure to add that to the next school committee agenda. Last but not least, just a reminder that, and I'm guilty of this, I have, according to my calendar, two days left to submit the superintendent's evaluation to Kathleen Amaral or, and or Mr. Noons, or?
You just send them to.
You can just send them to me.
Just send them to Kathleen.
Yeah.
Send, so. We'll send them to Kathleen. And the intention is to present the full committee's evaluation at the October 21 school committee meeting.
That's right.
So try to, we have a, correct me if I'm wrong, we, we have a Zoom meeting scheduled, Dr. Seba McGuire, on the 18th at noon time, that Friday.
Yep.
To go over it with you.
Thank you.
Yeah. No, that's fine. I'm good.
All right.
Yeah.
And that is all I have. Turn it over to my colleagues.
No, I just wanted to put a plug quickly. Mrs. Denisio had mentioned this the last meeting, but October 15, which is before we next meet, which is a week from tomorrow, at the James Quinn School, the Dartmouth Special Education Parent Advisory Council will be meeting. And it's twofold. It is, the, we're required every year to present on parents' guardian rights. So we'll be doing that. And we always make room for Q&amp;A. But also, to encourage and welcome other guardians and caregivers to take the lead on this important activity that is stamped in Massachusetts regulations. We're required to have a special parent advisory council. I'm here, but I'm, I'm recognizing, right, there's some, we need some younger, no experience necessary. The requirement is to have a student who receives special education services. And the, sort of the, I encourage perspective that it's not about your child, it's about all children who are receiving services. So it allows you sort of that overarching perspective to think about not what's, not what's good about, good for my child. There's certainly value in getting to connect with the school department regularly and learn more about the laws. But really, to think about, how can I volunteer to make an impact for all students in our town who are receiving special education services? And if anyone has any questions, they certainly can reach out to me. But I encourage everyone to stop by Quinn on October 15 at 6 o'clock to learn your rights and sign on the dotted line and take over this wonderful role that I've been filling since 2012, I think. So the more, the merrier. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Amaral. Mr. Noons?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, the band, last Saturday, we were at Derfey High, BMC Derfey High School for the US Band Competition. Students scored a 90.5 in Division Four, which was the number one high score for the evening, gave them first place in that division. They walked away with all, all the captions except for color guide. So they had a great night. We're in King Philip this Saturday night up in Rantham. And then the following week, which is October 19, is our home show, starting at 6:00 PM in the evening. We've got 13 bands lined up to perform. That would put Dartmouth on somewhere probably about 9:15, you know. And again, they haven't come out with the times yet. So what I will do is get a, an email out this week to Dr. Seba McGuire, you, Mr. Oliver, and to Mr. Shea at the high school, looking to see if anyone's available to, or a representative to help with the trophy presentations and awards at the end of the night. So I will do that. So the gates will open at 5:30, and we'll be good to go.
Is it the 18th?
19th.
I'm sure I can, but I'll let you know.
Yeah.
But I always love that.
The more, the merrier.
And that's October.
October 19.
All right. Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Nothing for me.
Yep.
All right. Let's get back over to the agenda. With that, the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Dartmouth School Committee is scheduled for Monday, October 21, 2024, right here in the Dartmouth High School Media Center. Do we, do we have an executive session tonight?
We do not.
I didn't think so. Okay. Perfect. So please disregard that on the agenda that was put there in the event we needed it. And I do remember having the conversation, just wanted to confirm, there will be no executive session this evening. So with that, Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
motion by Mr. Noons, second by Mrs. Amaral, and the motion, any further discussion? Chair hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night.
Oh, hey.
That's good.
Good stuff.
Good stuff.
Great. Thank you, Chris.